This meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now called order. Councilman Green will give the invocation. Councilman Bradford will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm sorry. Okay, Assistant Chief White. Do the invocation and Pastor Green will lead us into the pledge.
Good afternoon. Let us pray. Father God, we come before you thanking you for your mercy and your grace. Thanking you for being a loving God. Thanking you for being a forgiving God. You said in your word, Father God, that the Son of Man came to be served, came to serve and not to serve. We ask that you would just guide us and direct us in the servitude you would have us to perform for this city, Father God. We also ask that you bless the city of Shreveport and its citizens. These blessings we ask in your darling son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen and thank God.
Amen. You say the pledge?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the legal and religious arena of our world.
Thank you, Chief White. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilman Bradford.
Present.
Councilwoman Fuller. Councilman Jefferson.
Present.
Councilman Butcher.
Speaker of the LSU.
Councilman.
Florrie.
Present.
Councilman Burden.
I'm here.
And Councilman Paul.
Present. Those two council members are running late and they would be here shortly. Is there a motion approved in the minutes? Okay, that's from the Monday, December 16th and the Thursday, December 19th meeting. The move by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Bradford. Vote, please.
I have a blank voting screen, Mr. Chairman. My voting screen is not on, so I can't cast my vote. But I vote yes on this matter.
I got you down for yes.
Okay. All right. And that passes. With five.
Five.
Yeah, five, I'm sorry. Does any council, before we get that, I just wanted to say, Ms. Connie, who was in the back, our IT person, today is her birthday and she's asked that we would get out of here at a timely manner so she can have dinner with her husband. Is there a council member that has any awards, distinguished guests?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Green, and then I have Councilman Flair.
I'd just like to recognize a legend that is with us today, Dr. Raymond Hicks is here with us today. And I was also going to recognize Connie, but, Mr. Chairman, you did.
Okay.
But I have a request for the mayor. Can I do it this time? Mr. Mayor, my district, the airport is in my district, but we've never had basically any representation from the district. So, I would ask that if you would, to organize an advisory council to the airport board. They wouldn't have the authority to vote, but at least they would be there to know what and when and whatever is going on. And just a name, just to start it off, Ms. Gloria Lee. She's been involved with that airport authority and all that for years. So, if you'd be so kind to do that, I really would appreciate it.
Absolutely, Count. I think that's a great idea. I'll sit with the board, we'll look at the bylaws, but I think that if there are non-voting members, I think that'll be fine. So, I'll follow up with you after I speak with them.
And also, I'd like to invite council members on Thursday morning. We're having a big event out at the airport. A company is coming in and I think they will be bringing in about 90 jobs. So, they will have the announcement on Thursday morning at 10 o'clock. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thursday at 10:00 a.m. at Apple Park?
It's gonna, no.
At the airport.
At the airport. You turn on Bethune Street and go there where those hangars are. And that's where they'll be.
Gotcha. All right, Councilman Flair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request that this time that Ms. Asha Basara and Mr. Martinez and represented from Tomac to be able to come up and do a presentation. Would that be in order, sir?
Yes, sir.
It worked.
You just got back from the game?
Thank you, Councilman Flair. It's good to be here today. We have recently gone through, or are going through, the ITEP process and I was asked to show a few slides on our project. We're a startup company here in town. We've been working on the project for a couple of years. We occupy a building in the Southern Hills District, District E, near Mansfield Road and Burt Coons. It's the old Haverdees Furniture Building. My name is Clay Hargit and my two partners are Scott Hoffman and Rand Falmont. Scott is a native of Shreveport, as is Rand, and I went to Centenary 20 years ago and I moved back approximately three years ago to launch this project. So, first and foremost, Tomac Glass Company, or is officially called Tomac Glass Partners, is a glass fabrication and tempering business. We make shower doors. We make heavy plate glass that's tempered for commercial buildings, high-rise skins of buildings. And there's an epidemic in Shreveport in terms of the turnaround time in the supply. So, we dug into the data and we found, as you can see here in the map, that there's a giant hole right here in northwest Louisiana in terms of supply of tempered glass. All the yellow stars represent tempering facilities in the southeast. There's never been a tempering facility here in Shreveport or northwest Louisiana. Our furnace takes glass that is already made and changes the molecular structure to make it into safety glass or tempered glass. This kind of walks you through a little bit of a breakdown of our revenue streams. The majority of our revenue would come from tempered glass and insulated glass, which would be double-pane windows for residential, commercial, and architectural applications. We also charge to do edgework, fabrication, that sort of thing. This is the primary driver behind the tempering technology. We have a slew of auxiliary equipment within our facility. Everything from a water jet to, which is a custom fabrication piece of equipment, to window-making equipment. But this is the machine that tempers the glass. It's approximately 60 feet long. It's about seven feet tall. It runs at 1,400 degrees and then we cool the glass very rapidly when it comes out. So, we need about 3,000 amps of power to run the facility and we had a great experience with SWEPCO getting our facility up and running. All the equipment is in place to date and we should be in production of Fallgo's well in a few weeks. This just walks you through, or shows you a schematic of what tempered glass looks like, similar to how you would temper steel if you think of a blacksmith. They take the metal out of the forge and dunk it in water. We simply blast the glass with really cold air at high pressures as soon as it comes out of the furnace. And what that does is it puts surface tension on the glass and therefore when it breaks, it breaks in pebbles, so it would be considered safety glass. Basically, you wouldn't get cut detrimentally. This is an example of a furnace. Before ours was assembled, we visited a facility outside of our market where we could get some hands-on experience with the equipment. So, that's pretty much it. I appreciate your time. Thank you for letting me review this.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman.
Thank you so much for the presentation and for being here. You know, I've expressed a desire in recent weeks for the council to have a consistent procedure for evaluating these ITEP applications. I mean, your project seems to me to be exactly the sort of thing that we would be inclined to support. But I do want to make sure that every time an ITEP application comes before the council, we are applying the same standards to make sure that what we're doing when we approve these exemptions is incentivizing business that otherwise would not locate here or that we might lose, rather than just giving tax breaks to businesses that are taking advantage of an opportunity that is not necessary for them to remain. And so, I'm just going to ask you a few questions about this project. When did you complete installation of all this equipment at this facility?
Thank you. We are still finalizing the installation of the equipment. It arrived end of November, beginning of December, and everything should be in place and commissioned in a few weeks. I also wanted to share that we're going to create 50 jobs in that district. We've hired several people to date. Thank you.
And what is the total investment that you've made in this equipment for which you're requesting exemption?
The equipment is just shy of $2 million. We invest in state-of-the-art equipment for this facility.
And the 50 jobs you've created, you anticipate will be permanent jobs?
They will. We will ramp up to 50 jobs once the organization is healthy. Initially, our crew will be a skeleton crew of roughly 15 employees on the production floor and then it will grow to 30 by the end of year one and then 50 as soon as the organization can support it.
And where are you in the process with the state? Have you already received the state's approval and you're coming to us? Is that?
That's exactly right. And we tried to do a meet and greet with each taxing entity here locally, just to introduce ourselves and let you know who we are and what we do. And we have since been to the state and we are here now for approval.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilman Nicholson, you spoke of the process. We did a cost-benefit analysis on this ITEP submission, just like we will with any that are considering location in the city of Shreveport, because I share, you know, your desire to have a consistency in the approach to incentive programs. And this shows a negative impact, cash impact to the city of Shreveport of $200,000 over the next five years. So, the way the industrial tax exemption program, ITEP, works now is it's an 80% exemption, so the city of Shreveport will collect 20% of that tax value day one and then it's up for renewal for an additional three years after the term, the first five-year term. But I reviewed the East Baton Rouge document that you sent and this would fall in line with that. And this project passed the Board of Commerce and Industry in December unanimously in Baton Rouge and went through all the processes that the state required. And as he mentioned, we've had meetings with Councilman Flair and the Sheriff's Department, as well as the other related taxing bodies to make sure they were aware of this project. If they had any questions, that we answered those questions as this process moved forward.
Certainly. And Mr. Martinez, as I've told you by email, if you would share any thoughts about the East Baton Rouge plan and improvements we might make before we adopt a similar set of plans, I would appreciate that.
And I'm happy to work with this council and the leadership to make sure that happens. And the only thing I saw that I could see that would be problematic with the East Baton Rouge document was there's no consideration of business retention. I think that's something that's very important with some of the companies, especially that operate on a national and international scale as far as competition within the company for those investments. I think that's something we need to consider.
I appreciate that. I want to make sure that we proceed in a judicious manner in adopting guidelines.
Certainly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. Another councilman?
Mayor Perkins, did you have any announcements or distinguished guests you wanted to look at this time?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Over this past weekend, we experienced severe storms with winds in excess of 80 miles per hour in the area, heavy rain, extreme lightning, and some of our neighbors suffered losses of life and serious property damage. I ask that our community keep them in their prayers. I want to thank the men and women of Shreveport Fire Department and the Shreveport Police Department who worked late into the evening and early into the morning helping those in distress during that storm. Additionally, I want to thank our IT department for working around the clock, including this weekend, to get the city's network back up and running following a significant outage due to the storm. So, I thank those selfless city employees for really jumping in and helping us recover as quickly as we did. The city of Shreveport IT department is partnering with Step Forward and the International Youth Foundation to put 125 Raspberry Pis in SPAR centers. These computers will help children in underserved communities learn to write code, learn to interact with also smart technology, smart city technology. These 65 machines can also be mounted to neighborhood poles and used to power security cameras, detect gunshots, monitor air quality, and traffic conditions. They can even help locate lost dogs. So, this is pretty high-tech equipment and it costs the taxpayers $0. This was a grant the city received and now our young people can interact with this technology and hopefully create some companies themselves. I want to thank everyone who attended the Independence Bowl and all our departments that supported the huge undertaking. It was a great success. We have one of the highest attendance in years and I'm glad our hometown, our home team, Louisiana Tech, was able to walk away with the win over the University of Miami. Lastly, I want to, I'm a military guy, so I don't typically wear hats indoors, but I want to thank Councilman Flair for giving me this nice Christmas present. Thanks to the councilman for this nice Christmas present, nice hat. I'll be rocking it around the city every now and then. And I want to say, how about them Tigers? I'm sure everybody is super proud of our state team for winning the national championship over Clemson last night. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all my remarks for today.
Okay. Before we go on, I did want to say, I want to thank everyone here who sent their condolences and prayers to me and my family during the time of the passing of my father. I want to say I thank you, the council was extremely nice to me and I appreciate that and the mayor and his office and a lot of you out in the audience here. So, I just want to say thank you for that during that time. We have Mr. Green. Anyone have anything relative for property standards? Mr. Green is here. Yeah. Did you have anything? Did you have something? Come on. Okay.
I was just going to say thank you for your quick response on something last week. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Green. We all received yes from Ms. Crell. Mr. Thompson, is there any legislation to be added today?
There was some discussion yesterday about adding the appointment of Gary Norman, who's been appointed Director of Public Works, to the agenda for confirmation. This would be a proper time to do it if you'd like to do that.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in properly. Second, it's been moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Butcher. So, the first one is to suspend the rules?
No, no, to add it to the agenda.
To add to the agenda. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You know, under the state law, you have to ask whether or not there's anybody who's for or against.
Wants to speak for or against? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience or anyone here present today that wants to speak for or against adding this to the agenda, which is adding Gary Norman's to the agenda? Sure. Please. Don't speak against Gary, that's my friend.
Oh, no, no, never. Good afternoon. My name is Rhonda Moore. I'm the Chief of Office Administration for Permits and Inspection. I have worked under Gary Norman for the last four years and knew Gary previously before he left and went to Tennessee. Gary is a wonderful person and an excellent boss and I am 100% for him being appointed the Director of Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Anyone else to speak for or against? Saying none? Thank you. Now to...
Mr. Chairman, because we've not had the, you've not had the appointment for two weeks under the rules, as required by the rules, it would be appropriate for a motion to suspend the rules.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
It's been motioned by Councilman Green and seconded by everyone up here, Councilwoman Fuller. Please vote. And that motion carries with seven. Congratulations, Mr. Norman.
You need to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that he be confirmed. Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Green and seconded by Councilman Butcher to confirm. Please vote. And motion carries with seven, as I said. Congratulations, Mr. Norman. Thank you. Will we have the final request, a speaker?
Public Convenance. Mr. Alonzo Sanders. Mr. Sanders. Ms. LaHoma Williams.
Mr. Mayor, councilpeople. I'm LaHoma Williams and I live at 236 B74th Street, 71106. And I'm here again about AV Palmer Park. And hopefully, since we weren't on the verge last year, that we somewhere near the top this for this year. And I also would like to talk about the water. I read article about, you know, water racing, the price of our water. And I, in front of my house, there is an open ditch. And it started like the last part of October, free-running city water going down through that ditch. I called and they came out, located where it was coming from, put tape around it, and that was the end of it. The tape is still around it, so it said that they don't know where it is. And I'd just like to say that, you know, raise our water bill and then we have wasting water, you know? That don't make a whole lot of sense to me. So, if it's any way possible that, you know, we could get someone out there to take care of that wasted water and also work on our center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman.
And Councilman Butcher?
Ms. Williams, thanks for coming up. I wondered if maybe the administration could get her with Ms. Featherston about that leak in front of her house, maybe since she's back there.
Yeah, that's my question is what was the address, so I can find out what's going on there.
But a comment real quick on the AV Palmer Park. We moved some money for SPAR to be able to do some repairs to buildings and I specifically requested, and I believe that three or four of us did, that AV Palmer be given attention in that movie, that movement that we made over of the money in the budget. So, hopefully, we'll get something done to help with the roof.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Irma Rogers.
Good afternoon. Chairman Bowman, Vice Chair, Mr. Nicholson, and other members of the council, Mayor Perkins and staff. I was here speaking, I believe it was late November, concerning ordinance number 161, the amendment concerning liquor and retail dealers of alcohol opening and closing. At that time, I explained to you that we have nine places where alcohol can be purchased within my community within a four-mile length, not radius, but a straight length. I'm still concerned, and I would like, I was sitting yesterday listening at Councilman Green discuss the issue. Please, if you're going to send it back to the Safety Committee for a review, do one other thing. This is based on Pastor Clyde Jones, Sr., who is now deceased. Two years ago, he tried to stop one of the liquor licenses from expanding within our community. And what he ran into was that they were circumvented from the local ordinances and the MPC because they went to ATF in Baton Rouge. So, he turned the issue over to our state representative. If you're going to look at those, by prohibiting the sale after certain hours, we had suggestions, I think the last time I came, we talked about 9:00 and 10:00 because there was a place within our community where loss of life was experienced at a very late hour after midnight. And someone came to our meeting, MLK Community Development Corporation, and she instituted a petition because this was a relative of hers, because she wanted the establishment closed. So, I wanted to bring that back to your attention while this is still under discussion, because it is really offensive when the citizens and these places are near homes. They're near homes. They may be adjacent to other businesses, but they are near homes within my community. They're still homes on MLK. So, I wanted to bring that up. If you're going to send it back to the Safety Committee or whichever committee is going to look at it, please take a look at that and see if there are any loopholes. Also reiterate that primarily the times for having the opening from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. was because of downtown and those other cafes that sell alcohol that were near the casinos, not in the neighborhoods.
Ms. Rogers, let me just say how much I appreciate your remarks. I have communicated to Councilman Green based on his remarks yesterday that I'm willing for there to be further committee or council discussion about this, but I hope what emerges from the process is comprehensive regulation that addresses some of the very serious harms you've described. And I hope that you'll remain in contact with your representative on the council and encourage him to support those changes. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Bill Weiner.
I need the IT person to come back up and fix this because one of the other speakers.
Would IT help, Mr. Weiner, please?
It should be set up.
Thank you.
I'm Bill Weiner, 2 Longleaf Lane, 71106. I have put everything on a PowerPoint and it should run for three minutes. How do I start it?
It's here.
Mr. Weiner, thank you for taking the time to put this together. I wish you would provide a copy to the clerk of council so that we could have it. Would you provide a copy of your presentation to the clerk of council?
You have a copy here.
Okay.
I think, I think there's two more slides.
I have a question.
Okay. Ms. Fuller.
Mr. Weiner, we've been told by the development team that if they take on the liability for the toxic waste cleanup, that it would not come back to us.
So they want to put it on the city. Look, I was on a board of a short line railroad that in the 1920s, thereabout, we leased land along the railroad to a company that made railroad tax, railroad ties. We discovered 10 years ago, maybe 20, that they left the site condemned with toxic waste of creosote and xylene. We've been cleaning it up. We've been doing it for about 30 years at great cost. And it's just a small site. This will bankrupt the city if the city is anyway involved in remediation of that site. So please, if you don't do anything, stay clear of getting involved, of becoming the responsible party. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. Mr. Versa Clark. Mr. Clark.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I began with a quote, "Develop a detailed plan for across bayou as a residential district with publicly accessible natural green space along the water. Take steps to prepare the area for development, correct zoning, design guidelines, park planning, brownfields cleanup, and then develop a request for proposal to see an experienced developer for a public-private development," close quote. That quote is word for word from page 10-2 of the 1030 Master Plan. This is one of seven strategies to develop, to redevelop downtown. There is activity, as I speak, to accomplish almost all of them, and so I was disappointed to see the boards of DDA and DSDC vote to oppose the project. I am in favor of the project for any number of reasons, but more specifically because of assurances that six, I'm sorry, five of the eight industries that were to be economic development goals, which were pulled from the failed bond proposal, will be included in the project plans. So that commitment would be a $24,000, $24 million investment, creating between 1120 and 2240 more non-minimum wage jobs that would be above the original projections. I would close with another quote, this one from Robert Kennedy. "Some men see things as they are and ask why. I dream of things that never were and ask why not."
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Kaitlin Douglas.
Happy New Year, everyone. So I came here today to-
Say the name and address, I'm sorry.
I always forget that part. Kaitlin Douglas, I stay in District F. I stay with family and they don't like me to give my address out like that, so. But it's written down, I think, on my card. I think she gave you guys a hand, a few handouts. I don't know if they made them all the way over this way, but I'm working with the Louisiana Poor People's Campaign. The Poor People's Campaign in a nutshell, for those who don't know, is a continuation of the work that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was doing before his assassination, which is a national organizing movement to organize poor and impoverished people across the nation. So there's a documentary called Forty Days and Forty Nights Being Made about that movement. And we will have a post-panel discussion on January 22nd at the Wallet branch library. I don't know which district that is specifically, but that's your district? Okay, so if you could come to another one of my events. It's being presented in, by the Louisiana Poor People's Campaign, Hood Politics, which is my organization, the local NAACP chapter, and ASAP Shreveport. And we are wanting to get aggressive with how we talk about and tackle the current state of poverty in Louisiana. I don't know if you guys have seen the statistics, but they are really, really bad. We're in a state of emergency across the nation when it comes to poverty. And I just wanted to invite you guys out. I gave you guys again a few handouts. And Casey, actually, if I could talk to you when you get some time, because we, Kirk and I were supposed to be partnering with My Brothers Keeper and Step Forward as well to do a trauma, trauma-based discussion about it as well that week. So that's what I wanted to give you guys, and I hope you guys come out. If you have questions, I'll be right over there. So, okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Marvin Mohammed.
Yes, sir, Marvin Mohammed, 2808 Hershey D. Wilson, Shreveport. I made a commitment to myself that I would only come to the, any future city council meetings to talk about economic development. And the reason why, because of that, is because my spiritual father, the honorable Minister Louis Farrakhan, teaches us that politics without economics is simple without substance. And so, poor and impoverished people, which Kaitlin was speaking about, can come down here in droves, but without dollars behind, behind their, behind their demands and their requests, it fall on deaf ears. But with, with saying that, I do have to speak about a resolution number three that was introduced, introduced by Councilman Frey, which is to establish a charter committee review. I want to hasten and caution this, this council to reject that. Oftentimes, and I know we don't like to talk about this, is that ill intentions always happens through jurisprudence and public policy. Whether we are talking about the 1857 Dred Scott decision, whether we are talking about the 1896 President versus Ferguson, the 1954 Brown versus the Board of Education, 63, 64, 65, with the Accommodations Act, the Civil Rights Act, or the, or the Voting Rights Act. This charter review only has, would only put the city of Shreveport in a, into a discussion about weakening what? Right now, in 1977, 1978, 1976, bold, brave, and courageous men such as Hillary Huckabee, Louis Pennington, Joe Wilson, others filed the Bull lawsuit to, to combat the rather disbalanced city government. We have to be very careful with these charter reviews because now, after 52 years, now that the Pennington has shifted, where now the once minority is now the minority, now these charter reviews now become an opportunity for now the new minority to try to attack the, the majority. Meaning that now we want to try to weaken the mayor's power, even weaken now the majority. So we have to be real careful that we don't sink the city into another discussion of race by, by looking at the charter. I will, my question would be, what about the Shreveport Charter, City Charter that we need to discuss? And if that's not something that is presented in discussions before it's voted on, then I would say that we're not, that we don't need to move in that direction. Lastly, I did want to also-
Mr. Mohammed, I've done my best to be consistent about this. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilbur Bedford Jr. Mr. Bedford. Ms. Barbara Wilson.
Good evening, Councilman, Mayor Perkins and staff. My name is Barbara Wilson and I live at 3606 Judson. And I'm here, once again, I was here about a few years ago. And the problem is, my mother be, she's 85 years old and she barely can get around, but she keep getting these bills from property standard cutting the grass on Ziegler Street, 1110 Ziegler Street, which is her house was torn down by mistake by the city of Shreveport when Mayor Glover was in office. And they acknowledged that they did cut, tore the house down, said, "Oops, we made a mistake." And Mayor Glover told my mom he was going to take care of the problem, which never happened. But every year, she's getting harassed, she feel like she's been harassed by the city because she keep getting this bill, they cut the grass, which is a city cut it, she never got compensated for anything. They cut the grass with their lot, the next to, city owner property next to her is on Ziegler Street, which their grass sometimes is very high. So I want to know if she cut their grass, would the city reimburse her? But I don't think she should have to pay for something the city did from the beginning.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry to hear about that.
Is Terrence here still?
Oh, he's not, he stepped out. As long as we have your contact, I'll have Terrence reach out to you. We'll assist your mother.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, apartment M110, Shreveport, 71101. I believe that just recently, a bill about these robocalls was signed into a brand-new law and a final decision was made. And it stated that in the law, if these robocalls were made anymore, or they continued for many companies, that they would be subjected to a $10,000 fine per call. Now, just recently, at the start of this year, I've had four of them at the present time. The last one I got was January 12, 2020, at 8:26 p.m., and it's from a 2243850718. And for this robo-call, I'm glad I'm exposing you for what you really are. This nonsense really needs to stop right now because if law enforcement can't do something to stop them, I may have to go to the Shreveport City Court and get something done, if that's what it comes down to. I used to think that these were just wrong numbers. Boy, was I ever wrong. They, they're just about as bad as Oscar yelling the other night on Raw at Becky Lynch and then throwing something at her and speaking in a language that I couldn't even understand, going, "That's stupid." And so are the robo-calls. I use the SAR57 call tracing to trace the calls, caller ID to write the calls down, and SAR60 call block to even block the calls. Since they're going to be the green light and I'm still the red light, they're the grass and weeds and I'm the lawnmower. I mentioned that before, and as far as I'm concerned, robocalls can kiss my grits like Flo Telsmael.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Really?
I was talking to Jerry and looking at you.
Hey, Sammy, you know that Orion Spilt is a complete waste of space.
Oh, really?
That wasn't a good joke, was it? I give it three stars.
Please, I just ate.
Mr. Alonzo Sanders.
Alonzo Sanders, 1019 Pickett Street. I'm here about 1016 Pickett Street, which is another case, ordinance 193, zoning case number 19441C. So what we have here is, I'm trying to get a rezone and I was downzoned. And I would like to ask that the city council do not remand me back to the MPC board for this second case. There has been a criminal conflict of interest, and I've submitted a complaint to the city council, as well as to the clerk. I don't know if you guys have read it, but it is extremely clear, as well as I sent two attachments, but I have over 30-something other documents that I plan on introducing when we go to court. But I want to ask that the city council, if you don't approve it, afford me my right to take this matter to district court so that I can let a judge handle it in a matter because it seem that certain things that are going on within this government is based on relationships, and I don't have any with either party or either board. I ask that y'all let me move on with my building, move on with my life. I've been coming here for about four months now, trying to get my land rezoned. This has been a process over three years of me trying to build a building, and I hear so much from the council and other board members when they're speaking about economic development within the city. And it seems to me that that's what I'm trying to do. Maybe I don't have more money than the developers who are trying to keep me from moving it into commercial because they want it to stay residential, which I have their names and things as well. But that'll be, y'all will be able to hear that in court. This staff is deliberately keeping me from rezoning my land to commercial. And I don't want to seem like the person who's coming up here trying to start something or anything. I've bought this land commercial. I want to build my building. If it wasn't for this process, I probably wouldn't even know any of you. I've come to know and read about a lot of you since then, and I've come to see what's going on in the city council. This has been my first time even being in this place since I've been going through this ordeal. And it is an extreme, huge ordeal on me and my family. I ask that any city council members who are just and know the right thing to do, I'm pretty sure that y'all have already talked about this case time and time after again, and that y'all know what I'm trying to do commercially with my land. Thirty other applicants have been approved. Funny, I'm the only one since the existence of the downzoning who has not been approved. So either 31 is an extremely unlucky number, or there are officials who are intentionally keeping me from zoning my land to commercial so they can make it residential, so they can build their townhouses-
Mr. Sanders, your time has expired, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Sanders. I, I appreciate your, your persistence. You have appeared and shown yourself to be very serious about what you want to do. You had people come before us to express their confidence in you and how you have affected some of their lives. And my understanding is that if you can establish this business, that you will be able to employ some others, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
In that, in that area, what's, what's, what's the most prevalent business that, that is along that corridor?
Nothing's over on my side.
Nothing, nothing.
Nothing's in that area. Land, that's all. I'm the only person developing. You have down the street, the Fertitas, you have down the other way, the Spar, not to say- to say anything about the Fertitas, but, you know, they have a, a great restaurant, but, um, certain members of the community, we need a place for them to go, I, I don't know how to put that without offending anyone.
I understand, I understand where you're coming from. I just wanted to express my appreciation for you being persistent and just believing that, uh, that you can, you can establish a business and provide economics and other job opportunities for you, for you.
And that's exactly what I'm trying to do, I'm really trying to not only help the people who are around me who have mental illnesses, uh, a lot of them are homeless that I've met, it's a lot of other situation, I can't just sit up here and explain it, it'll take a lot of time, but, um, I could've just went to Dallas with this building, I could've moved if I wanted to, but I have so many friends who are still in the streets right now, and when I say that, I mean like, poor, uh, extremely poor, beyond the average of the United States statistics, and a job is not really gonna help them, education is gonna help them, and business education to, uh, make money and a whole bunch of different things like that, so, but I appreciate that you mentioned that, Mr. Bradford.
Well, I mean, and then you just said something that alarmed me, because I hear it almost weekly, and that is if I'm gonna get opportunities, I gotta move, I gotta move to Dallas, I gotta move to Atlanta, I gotta move, move somewhere, and that's, that seemed to be just piercing my ears every time I hear that, and we have opportunities to engage young people like you who, who are serious and, and, uh, wanna do good here, uh, so I'm gonna give your, your, your zoning, uh, issue my greatest consideration. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Those are all the requests to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Um, we have the following executive appointments to be considered, but I, I didn't know if there was someone else out who we didn't see yesterday, and if there was, then you can, that's up to the, uh, mask of the administration, if they want to call someone up or someone that we missed yesterday, I didn't know.
Yeah, uh, do we have anyone here for the Human Relations Commission? Ms. Critcher.
I'm the chair of the State Department.
That's fine.
Hello, I'm Adrienne Critcher, I am the Chair of the Human Relations Commission, I live at eight-seventeen Ontario, uh, seven-eleven-oh-six. Uh, you today are being presented with three current members who need to be re-appointed, uh, they've been recommended by Mayor Perkins, uh, they are currently on our commission, Dr. Sherri Kerr, uh, Dr. Michelle Welkimer, and Reverend Roosevelt Seaberry. They have served on the commission already, have made valuable contributions, I know Dr. Kerr was here yesterday, and I know some of you had some questions for her, I, I know that none of you were on the city council when the Human Relations Commission was created, so let me just, I'll just take a very brief time, just to sort of bring you up to speed, that, uh, commission was created to implement the Shreveport Fairness Ordinance. Uh, the Fairness Ordinance was passed in December of twenty-thirteen, and it's a non-discrimination ordinance, it's a local non-discrimination ordinance. It prohibits discrimination in public accommodations, employment, and housing based on race, color, sex, disability, age, ancestry, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, religious affiliation, and political affiliation. So that ordinance was passed at the end of twenty-thirteen, then the next year, the Human Relations Commission ordinance was passed that established the commission that enforces that ordinance. So we've been in effect, uh, since, uh, since twenty-four, since the end of twenty-fourteen, that's when the first members were appointed. Um, we, uh, our primary purpose is to hear any grievances that might be filed, uh, relating to discrimination. Um, many of these, uh, categories have protections at the state level and the national level, not all, uh, but our Human Relations Commission provides an easier way for people to be heard. Um, it's interesting, we have not had to hear any formal grievances, I think for a variety of reasons, we have had complaints that have been presented to us, we have been able to handle those through phone calls, uh, through some education, through sometimes just referrals to the proper agencies. Uh, so I think that, um, one reason is, of course, that a local ordinance like this doesn't have the teeth that a federal ordinance or a state ordinance has, we can levy a fine of five hundred dollars for a first offense, a thousand dollars for a subsequent offense, uh, but our primary goal was mediation, and that is how our policies and procedures are written, we, uh, we attempt mediation first. I think ordinances like these are aspirational, uh, cities that have ordinances like these find that, uh, people often voluntarily live up to the ordinance. Uh, it is, um, it is a great marketing tool for our city to use for economic development, to let companies who come here, that we'd like to recruit to come here, know that, uh, we are a city in the deep south, it might be unexpected that we have a local non-discrimination ordinance, uh, but, um, uh, it, it's a great marketing tool to let people know that we are serious about this. Anyway, uh, I would like to recommend that you confirm, uh, the, uh, current members of the commission. As my position as Chair of this commission, uh, Mayor Perkins has appointed me to an advisory committee for the Commission on Race, uh, that is going to dovetail nicely with some of the things that our Human Relations Commission is looking at. Uh, Dr. Welkimer in particular is a sociology professor, she's one of the ones up for reappointment today, she's very concerned about issues of low-wage workers and spatial poverty that we see in our city, those are things that we already started talking about on our commission when Mayor Perkins, uh, formed his Commission on Race, and I am on that advisory committee, so I'm looking forward to our Human Relations Commission, uh, these three members are an important part of that, uh, looking forward to our working closely with the Commission on Race to address, uh, many of these issues.
I think you cleared up some of, uh, the questions and comments that we had on yesterday. Um, Councilman Bradford, uh, you up to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and certainly good to see you, and thank you for your service to this city.
Sure, thank you.
Always available, and I appreciate that. On yesterday, Dr. Kerr, and I'm very familiar with the Human Relations Commission, as you know.
Right, yes.
She expressed that the like of, uh, inquiring, maybe due to, a lot of people don't, are not familiar with the commission, do you, do you, do you agree with that?
I, I think that's likely, uh, we have, I have been interviewed on TV and in the newspaper, but, you know, it's, sometimes it's difficult to get that word out, we do have a wonderful website, uh, city website, if you just Google Shreveport Human Relations Commission, uh, you'll see the website, it's really, it's really nice, I worked with, uh, the IT department here to develop that, and it has a great explanation of how to file a grievance, all the policies and procedures.
Yeah, and I agree that having the commission, uh, we may not realize it here, but on, on a national level, when cities have such commissions, it really does give credence to that, the progressiveness of that city.
It does, it does.
And, uh, as well as, uh, the, the commissional race that we're, Dr. Ford, I mean, government and other entities like to see cities being proactive and establishing these type of, uh, avenues in which residents can forge better, uh, better quality of life for themselves.
Exactly.
So, uh, do you see, and I know they're two different, uh, objectives and missions, that, that they can somewhat coexist and work it together on certain, certain-
Yes, I def, I definitely think we can do that, uh, Dr. Welkimer in particular had some ideas, I've already met with, uh, Mr. Fail, uh, our Economic Development Director, to talk to him about that, uh, we've approached the mayor with some of the things we're interested in, and I think there's a definite overlap.
Okay, and I'm gonna ask you, and you're not comfortable with answering, you don't have to answer, what is your view of race relations in Shreveport?
Well, I, I, I think it's a big problem.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a big problem. And, and, uh, because I'm on the advisory committee, I've done some reading, uh, I'd refer you all to the Kerner Commission that was, uh, set up nationally back in the sixties, they did some excellent work, you can Google it and read about it, uh, we know what many of the causes of the problems are, uh, we know those things, uh, they're not always what people wanna hear, and, uh, I, uh, the good news is, uh, a lot of research has already been done about some of these causes, poverty is a huge cause, and we have a lot of poverty in our city, uh, but, uh, we also have to learn to talk to people to get them on board, and, and that requires more than just data and information, you have to use good strategy in order to reach out to people who oftentimes enjoy a lot of privilege in society, and they didn't ask for it, and they don't feel responsible for it, and so we have to learn how to talk to each other.
Right. In a minute, I'm gonna ask Rashonda Dawson, who's here from United Way, who gave a presentation regarding, something you just mentioned, in regards to what the contributing factors are, and, and we may not actually understand them, but they are contributing factors. So let me ask you, my, my final question is, absence of a commissional race or the, the initial Human Race Commission, you familiar with that commission that was, that was created back in nineteen ninety-two?
Yes.
Yeah, and which, which again had a different, uh, mission.
Right.
Do you see either political leaders, uh, community leaders, religious leaders as being an effective alternative to, not, not an alternative to, but being a catalyst to improving race relations in this city?
Oh, well, definitely, those people in leadership in these various areas can definitely make a contribution.
People, people watch those leaderships.
Oh, definitely.
And if we can, we can get along, then that, that was gonna mention that, they can, the city can get along.
Yes, yes. I, I think one good thing is, whenever we work with, uh, local groups, uh, I think we are able to put a lot of, uh, of the ranker and division that we see in politics aside, we all know each other, uh, we know each other, our kids go to school together, we worship together, uh, we're down here at city council, at the commission meetings together, we have relationships, uh, and I have been, uh, very pleased in working with the mayor and this Commission on Race, uh, he has a good heart for this, and his heart is definitely in the right place, and trying to set up this commission, and he really wants to find solutions, and so I, I feel really good that we have strong support from the mayor.
Yeah, thank you for offering yourself to be a part of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions from anybody?
Councilman Nicholson?
Ms. Critcher, I had the privilege of meeting you during my campaign for office, and I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the important work that you and the other members of the commission do for our community.
Well, thank you, thank you, we're all volunteers, no one is paid on our commission, uh, and I think we have a really good group on our Human Relations Commission, we don't have any prima donnas, uh, everybody is there for the right reason.
And Councilman Green.
Thank you. Ma'am, I'd just like to say, I, I could roll with you, because when he asked you that question about, do we have a race problem, you were very honest.
Yeah.
And, uh, anything you want me to do, I'll do.
Oh, thank, well, thank you, I have a list. No, no, thank you, I, I, I appreciate that.
I just appreciate people that's honest, and, and they don't just talk around, you didn't put any flowers on it, you was just straight-up honest that we have a big problem. Call me, six-three-five-seven-one-one-eight.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I'll interview you on my radio show.
Okay, well, wonderful, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Uh, Mayor Perkins.
Okay.
I thought you were up, I'm sorry.
But, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with the, um, expressions from Ms. Critcher, I would like to move that we confirm those individuals who are for Human Relations Commission, confirm.
All right, it's been moved and properly, properly moved and seconded by, moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Green, uh, to confirm those for the Human Relations Commission. If there's no other discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Clay, uh, I mean, Lane, are, are you here for a purpose? To con, okay, she's up for confirmation?
I saw your, uh, mission, yes.
Okay, okay, Amy Wine? Amy?
Ren.
Okay.
Good afternoon, I'm Amy Ren. I live at sixty-one forty-five River Row, seven-eleven-oh-six, so it's nice to see you all this afternoon.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, and I appreciate your willingness to serve here, um, is it, I, I just want to say that I, I appreciate that, and sometimes it's, it's, it's hard to find, uh, good people who wanna do the right thing, and, and I appreciate, um, you and your willingness to do so.
Well, thank you so much, I look forward to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Move for confirmation, Mr. Chairman.
It's moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Green. And that motion carries with seven, thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am.
Mr. Hunter.
Senior Risk Manager, Richard.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I believe the administration wants to postpone the confirmation of the, of Mr. Hunter.
That's correct.
That's correct.
To postpone.
Summon, the postpone.
The postpone.
Yes.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson and seconded by the Chair. Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Mr. Josh Clayton, Mr.-
I'm not sure if Mr. Josh Clayton is here.
He came before the holiday.
He was here, uh, yeah, on the sixteenth, no, on the nineteenth.
Oh, that's right, he already presented. Move for confirmation, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Nicholson.
That's Josh Clayton.
For Josh Clayton, Shreveport Implementation and Redevelopment Authority vote. There's no other discussion to vote, and that carries with seven. And, Controller of Finance, Saber.
Sumo.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Butcher.
Green.
Green.
Seconded by me.
And seconded by Councilman Butcher, I'm sorry. Mr. Aver, there's no discussion, please vote, and that passes with seven.
Sumo, one, the Assistant City Attorney.
It's been moved by Councilman Green and seconded by Councilwoman Flurrie, for Assistant City Attorney, Ms. Dear Scott. If there's no other discussion, please vote, and that carries with seven. Congratulations to those individuals. There are no items under consent agenda for introduction to be adopted, Mr. Thompson, proceed with regular agenda legislation.
Uh, the first item is one-seventy-two, it authorizes a mayor to execute an acceptance of act of donation between the city and WIVI Land Development LLC, uh, for the sanitary sewer, lift station, forest main, and related facilities to serve Lucian Field Estates.
Sumo, second.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Flurrie, on one-seventy-two. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution number one recognizes the seventieth, seventy, seventieth anniversary of Bookty Washington High School.
Question.
Councilman Flurrie.
Councilman Bradford, tell, tell them what it is, ma'am.
Once a line, always a line.
Thank you.
Sumo.
It's been moved by Council, it's been moved by Councilman Green and seconded by Councilman Bradford. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Uh, resolution number two, uh, is a resolution where the mayor is making recommendations to the city council for its approval regarding the amount and types of various insurance premiums and authorize a mayor to execute a payment for the, uh, purpose of binding insurance.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Flurrie and seconded by the Chair. If there's no discussion, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, next one I'd like to be recognized for.
All right, and that motion carries with seven.
Resolution number three establishes a charter review committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask that, uh, I postpone that at this time.
Seven.
It's been moved by the Chair, no, it's been moved by Councilman Flurrie and seconded by Councilman Green, I'm sorry. Postpone, if there's no discussion, please vote. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven.
Mr. Chairman, we're now into introduction of resolutions. Number four authorizes a request to be made to the Louisiana Department of Natural Resources, Louisiana State Mineral and Energy Board to seek public bids for an oil, gas, and mineral lease involving the property located in District D and described herein, and to execute the lease for certain mineral interest owned by the city of Shreveport, to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents related to the intent of the resolution and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
So moved.
I thought you was introductions.
Oh.
The second is Resolution number five. It approves Tomac Glass Partners for participation in the industrial tax exemption program. It's located at 2940 West Bird Coons Industrial Loop. Resolution number six authorizes the mayor to execute a binding memorandum of understanding between the city of Shreveport and Gateway Louisiana LLC and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
So moved. Introduce.
Is that the last one?
Yes.
A second.
Moved by Councilman Butcher and seconded by Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, we're now?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry? Councilman Bradford?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, while this is for introduction, I just, I feel compelled to say this, and I'm, I'm very sort of concerned and disappointed of the way this, number six ordinance has been mischaracterized. I mean, we've getting social media emails, all other kind of communications, making it appear that this resolution will give property, give, 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 give land, create a TIF, repurposing millions of dollars that responsible cleanup, and that's not what this resolution says. Is, Mr. Thompson, is this what this resolution says?
No, this resolution generally just asks for information so that decisions can be made about whether or not the city has a legal authority to do what the original resolution asked it to do, a memorandum of understanding, and whether or not it has the finances to do it. It's to gather information.
Gather information. That, and I mentioned yesterday that the city attorney, the clerk, Ms. Danielle Ewing, all have met with me consistently to ensure that we don't put language in this resolution that would obligate the city in any way, that, that this resolution would be continuance on other things happening. And if those other things don't happen, this resolution is null and void. Mayor, mayor, are you, are you clear on the resolution number six on what it's asking to do?
Yes, Councilman, I am.
Okay. And I, I held a meeting with my Small Emergent Business Task Force where investors came to town, developers of this project expressed what they intend to do, what they would like to do. The resolution even states what is the possibility, but again, it's continuance upon your conversation with Gateway people to ascertain all of the, all of the information that will be provided to this council. And if this council chooses, we would create another, another revolution to move to phase two. Nothing more, nothing less. And you're willing to engage those investors?
Yes, Count, our administration is ready to engage those investors in whatever manner the council sees fit.
Now, it was, it was brought to my attention, I'm not sure, so you, if you, if you want to answer, you can, if not, were there other investors that came to town last week that you met with that offered to expand investing in Shreveport?
Yes, those investors are, they have a relationship with the other investors as well, though. These are all, these are all private dollars, just for anybody that's listening in. Yes, those investors have a relationship with some previous investors that have been here, so, yes.
But it was different and way from the cross-bayou property, is that right?
Well, geographically, they're open to, they're open to either or. We are very, I guess, sensitive right now to the cross-bayou area particularly because of some of the liabilities that could be there and some, some other things. So, we'd rather do like a phased approach. Whenever talking to developers, we need to shore up downtown, make sure we have foot traffic and a very strong central downtown where we are now. And this is all just, again, this is preferential. We can get into details with those as we discuss, but we'd like to shore up downtown, essential downtown, and that'll give us more time to really do research about cross-bayou. And, you know, if, if we see it as a feasible area, then you got infrastructure and a whole bunch of other cleanup that has to go on down there before we can go into there. So, I, I see it as a phased approach. We talked to them about that. All the private investors thus far didn't mind. They, they agreed. So, yeah, that was the nature of our conversation. But again, our, my administration is prepared to enter negotiations in whatever manner the council decides for us to.
Well, I mean, this, again, this, I'm sorry.
I'd like to call for a pump of water just for a moment. Madam Attorney, yesterday you made a statement that we shouldn't speak on this, and we've crossed the line yet. Are we still okay for speaking about this at this time?
It is my recommendation that because this matter is currently in litigation, that we do not discuss this resolution.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Butcher?
Ms. Krill?
Mr. Chairman, I, I had the floor.
Yes, sir.
And whereas I, I, I appreciate the, I don't see me talking on the meat of the resolution. I asked the mayor a question regarding a, a, a group of investors coming into town to engage him on the possibilities of investing $100 million in the city. That, that, that's why I was, I mean, the, the...
But we started out as on the resolution at hand, which is number six, and that's where the city...
Well, I mean, yeah, I guess so, but, but, but again, the, and I appreciate the council member, but, but, but at the same time, council members are going on radio and all other kind of social media discussing, discussing this issue, and it's misguided and it's erroneous that it's being said, because I want to be clear that the language of the resolution did not obligate this city in any way. It only allows the mayor to enter to a conversation, and I think we deserve to allow him to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Councilman Butcher?
I'm just going to ask her, Ms. Krill, if this needed to be, when I made the motion to put these forward for introduction, it was for all of them. Do we need to go ahead and move forward with the introduction of Resolution Six?
No, sir, I don't believe that it's necessary to change the procedure that you're operating. I'm just, my, my recommendation was just not to discuss the resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I mean, this is like needless to say, but I do want to put it on the record since the, the, because of the litigious nature of this, and we talked to the city attorney, that the city is also going to make sure that we are acting within our legal constraints as we go forward in negotiations, and we're going to make sure that we're operating within our fiscal constraints as well, being fiscally responsible with city resources. So, like I said, it's needless to say caveat, but we can do both of those things and talk to outside entities. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Nicholson?
I will just briefly comment without discussing the details of the proposal Gateway Development has made to the city, that the city must not acquire contaminated property without fully understanding the liabilities associated with that property. There is a federal law, which is referred to by the acronym CIRCLA, that imposes liability on purchasers of property even if they didn't do the contaminating. I don't know all the details of the property that is proposed to be purchased in connection with the deal that Gateway Development is suggesting to us or that is being explored, but the liability associated with environmental remediation can very easily run into the tens of millions of dollars, and for some property, it runs into the hundreds of millions. So, as a body, and I'm sure that the mayor is committed to doing this before we move forward with any deal with anybody, but as a matter of basic responsibility to the city and its future, we must run that liability to ground and fully understand it before we do anything or sign any document that requires us to take any action in connection with this matter. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilman, I'd like to add to that. We're familiar with the, the federal law as well, the, a tool that municipalities has used in negotiations with this and other entities, developers that purchase land, is just making sure there's a clause that whoever you purchase that land from assumes all liability post-transaction. So, we, again, we will tread extremely carefully as we go forward if the council sees fit. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We're back, point of order, back to the motion to introduce those resolutions.
We're now into introduction of ordinances?
Ordinances, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number one, amending Article Five annexations of Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances relative to annexation of property. Ordinance two amends various articles and sections in the City of Shreveport's Unified Development Code.
Move for introduction?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman...
We're now into ordinances on second reading.
Nicholson.
And final passage, I believe that ordinance 161 is to be postponed.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. Councilman Green expressed concern yesterday that this ordinance will not fully address the problems in his district with stores that are selling liquor late into the night. He, he talked about what a pervasive problem some of those stores create for his citizens, and in particular, he gave the example that sometimes people line up waiting for these stores to open, and they don't have any money, but the store extends them credit so that they can buy liquor until their next paycheck arrives. So, I want to make sure that the action we take on this issue and on regulation of alcohol more broadly addresses Councilman Green's concerns. I'm going to take him up on his offer of a tour of his district. I want to understand these stores and the problems they create, and we will come back to the council to consider this after we've discussed ways to expand and strengthen this legislation. And so, for that reason, I move to postpone.
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Green?
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Nicholson. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right. It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson and seconded by Councilman Butcher to postpone 161. If there's no other discussion, please vote.
Councilman Nicholson takes Nicholson.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 189 closes and abandons an alley in the Colter subdivision of TAL 20 in Shreveport in Section 37 Township 18 North Range 14 West.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Green on 189. If there's no discussion, further discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 190 amends Chapter 78, Section 123 of the Code concerning facility servitude over city-owned property.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson and seconded by Councilman Green on 190. If there's no discussion, please vote. That motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 191 amends various articles and sections of the Unified Development Code and otherwise provides with respect thereto.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Green.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Nicholson. If there's no other discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 192 amends various articles and sections in the Unified Development Code.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Green and seconded by Councilman Nicholson. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 193 is a zoning ordinance case number 19-441C. It rezones property located on the east side of Pickett Street and Fairfield Avenue from RUC Urban Core Residential District to C3 General Commercial District.
Motion to affirm the MPC recommendation?
Second.
The motion by...
Mr. Chairman, is that to adopt or?
Help, help.
Their, their recommendation was to deny, correct?
Right.
I want to uphold their recommendation.
The way it's generally done would be a motion to adopt, and you would ask the council to vote no.
Then that, please.
So then we...
Motion to adopt was by Councilwoman Fuller and seconded by Councilman Nicholson.
But we would vote no to affirm the...
With a request to vote?
With a request to vote no, to uphold what the MPC recommended.
So, do I vote no?
We're against as a no vote.
Yes.
Thank you.
Still think I'm confused, but okay. So, motion?
Motion fails.
Five-two.
Okay.
Ordinance 194 is a zoning matter, case number 19-443-C. It rezones property located on the southeast corner of Carroll Street and Yuri Drive from R17 Single Family Residential, Residential District to C2 Carda Commercial District.
So, Mr. Clark, my desire also is to affirm the action below, but in this case, because they did resunit, a motion to adopt and a yes vote would accomplish that. Is that correct? So, I move to adopt and request a yes vote.
Motion by Councilman Nicholson?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Butcher. If there's no discussion, please vote on 194. Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 195 is a zoning matter, 19-444-C. It rezones property located on the north side of Bird Coons Industrial Loop, approximately 925 feet east of Kingston Road intersection from C2 Carda Commercial District to C4 Heavy Commercial District.
Mr. Flurry, you researched that. You go with it. Yes, please. So moved. Yes.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Flurry and seconded by Councilman Bradford. If there's no discussion, please vote. And motion carries with seven.
Mr. Chairman, those are all of the matters on the regular agenda. There's another matter that I would ask the council to consider at this time. On January the 13th, we received a, an appointment from the mayor concerning the airport authority, and it was Jonathan Reynolds who was appointed to the Shreveport Airport Authority. We failed to put that on the agenda under the clerk's report. Mr. Reynolds is here. He's been waiting to be questioned by the council, and we would ask that if you would consider suspending the rules to allow that to happen at this time.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Green and seconded by Councilwoman Fuller to suspend the rules. If there's no other discussion, please, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would add the confirmation of Mr. Reynolds on to the agenda.
It's been moved by... That motion carries with seven, let me say that, the first motion.
If, if that's the council's wish, it was just to allow him to appear before the council so that you could ask him questions.
He's current in the board, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I would move that we suspend the rules to add it to the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Green.
Yes.
And is there anyone here to speak for or against adding this to the agenda? Is there anyone here to speak for adding, for or against adding it to the agenda? Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries with seven.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask Mr. Reynolds to come forward, please?
When I saw Mr. Reynolds out in the audience, I just wasn't for sure if that was today or in two weeks, so I apologize for that.
Good evening, Jonathan Reynolds, 2310 Summersworth Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7118. One correction, I don't know if I was waiting to be questioned, but...
That's what the clerk said, sir.
So, Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Bradford.
How long have you served on the, on the Capitol?
Two years. I came in the middle of a term.
Oh, you finished someone else's term?
I finished someone else's term, yes, sir. I finished someone else's term, yes, sir.
I know there's been some changes since you've been there. What's your overall view of the airport operations?
I believe the airport's going in the right direction. There's a lot of economic development opportunities. There's new things coming. There's an announcement that'll be here in a couple of days. We've had expansion in Shreveport Regional with Western Global. We've just appointed a new airport director that comes with a ton of experience from New York. There are some challenges. There's some challenges with the downtown airport tenant situation as a result of decades of not being held accountable and enforcing compliance, but it's a new board, it's a new day and we're doing the right things to move the airport forward.
I appreciate that your knowledge of what's happening seem to be very, very recent and keen. So how do your presence there enhance the future decisions of the airport, you feel? What do you offer, in other words?
I'm on the Budget and Finance Committee, so having a pretty thorough financial and banking background assists in that regard. Also, as of late, been pretty involved, well, with the airport director search as well as some of the FAA reviews, drove to Fort Worth to meet with the regional director of Federal Aviation Authority. So been doing quite a bit of research and giving my opinion and I'm going to be straight up with people. So I don't have any biases one way or the other.
Having known you, I feel comfortable that you will and that you are inserting your presence there. The thing I appreciate about you is that, which I try to encourage everybody to do, and not just consider who's right and who's wrong, but just doing what's right versus what's wrong. And I know you do that. So this term is how long, Mr. Chairman?
Three.
Five.
Five years.
It's a five-year.
It's a re...
Yeah.
And you have to stay the whole time.
Twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five.
It's five, I'm sorry.
Five, okay. All right. Hold on a question I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, is this a good time to not mention that I've known Mr. Reynolds since he was my captain in ROTC back at Magnet? Then I'm not going to talk about that then. That never happened.
We can say that for another time.
Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Reynolds, I too want to say this to you, that I know you live in my district and I've been following you on all of this controversy on the leases and the hang or something, but I got one question to ask you.
Sure.
To get a little feel for how you make sure you'd make a decision. If Councilman Bradford asked you to go on his solo flight, would you or would you not?
Uh, no.
That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
Let me tell you, I can't support this guy.
So you heard, I'm sorry.
You can go, Councilman, I'll go, I'll go.
You heard Councilman Green say earlier, being in airports in District F, that he sees some advantages in having an advisory board made up from residents from that area. Do you see an opportunity to get some advice or to get some insight from residents?
Absolutely. There was a sound study done several years ago because of the noise ordinance and as a result of that, some land was acquired in the community surrounding it and the outcome of that hasn't been extremely beneficial for all of the tenants. And there are some solutions that we can work together to get to, but we're going to need some assistance from some of the tenants in those communities.
Well, the mayor has players to be, look at the bylaws and ordinances of the airport and if that's feasible to do so, he's interested in looking at that opportunity, so.
And there's some funding, there's a grant actually to do a little more research to come up with a solution.
So your meetings are held monthly?
Yes, sir.
And is it open to the public? Are there opportunities for public comments?
Yes.
They are.
And they do take advantage of them.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Mayor Perkins. I don't even have, I tried to take it down. Councilman Bradford stole my thunder. That was literally the question I was about to ask Mr. Reynolds on what his opinions were on the recommendation from Councilman Green, so you already took it.
Well, good mind, think alike. Mr. Chairman, if there's no other questions, I would like to move that we confirm this gentleman.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and second by the chair, confirm the reappointment of Jonathan Reynolds. If there's no discussion, please vote. So to the vet Fuller's ROTC buddy, congratulations, Mr. Reynolds.
Picture with the braces and the bangs and everything.
All right. Where are we now, Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm not aware of any of the ordinance, that anybody wants to pull ordinance 162 from the table agenda and there are no appeals. We're now under reports from officers, boards and committees.
All right. Are there any reports from any officer's boards or committee? None. Is that it for the clerk's report?
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing except the items that are printed on the agenda.
Okay. And we discussed about this library board. When did that come back up? The library board, two weeks.
Twenty-eight.
Okay. All right. Mayor Perkins, do you have any additional communication?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Does any council member have any additional communication? Councilman Green?
Mr. Chair, I would like to ask the Public Safety Committee if they would consider looking at the possibility during the time that we do fireworks, that because we have a lot of senior citizens, I know in my district, and those fireworks are really giving them the blues, that we could maybe have a designated place like a park whereas the kids or whoever could go because at this time, not only do they shoot fireworks, they shoot their guns and it's scaring a lot of seniors. Scared me too, but if we could, you all could look at that as to maybe we could possibly have designated places that you could do fireworks versus just doing them on every street in the community. I'd just like to ask if that's possible for the Public Safety Committee.
If I'm the chair next year or this year, we'll definitely consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I heard you distinguish yourself against from the senior citizens. I was trying to see, are you or you not a senior citizen?
I'm wondering if I am because it's a nerve my all. I'm like, am I a senior citizen? Because that kept me up. I was not, my nerves were bad after 4th of July.
I can't hardly hear you on this side over here.
Just answer my question, all right.
Councilman Flurry, what did they say about me down there? Was he talking about my mom or something? Did he say something about?
No, they were talking about how much they love you.
Okay, all right, we're good.
He said he wanted to see your AARP card.
All right. Now we are down to a, we're to a point where we will be, we have the election of the new chair and vice chair, but before we do that, I just want to say that I really have appreciated you all allowing me the opportunity to serve as your chair the past year and also the previous year. I've learned some things and I've learned from, I think, each individual up here and of course, when you get to know someone, it's just like a new relationship. You have your highs and your lows and then you try your best to get to know that person and try to work with them throughout that entire relationship. So I just want to say, I think the new ones who have been here with me the past year and definitely Councilman Flurry.
Oh.
I didn't want to say oh because, Councilman Flurry and especially, I have to say that, especially Councilman Bradford, I've learned, and I have, I've said that on numerous occasions, but I want to say it today also, on numerous occasions, some things that I have seen differently because I was born and raised at a time that things weren't as they were, as you seen. So I appreciate the knowledge and the commitment that you've shown to me to try to point me in the right direction on certain things, so I had to say that. And also to the, my city attorney, I mean, my city clerks. Art has been, you know, that's just a jewel, a library for me and I probably called them and asked them some of the stupidest questions there is, but I appreciate you not treating me as if, you know, a damn jury. You should have known that, you know. I appreciate that very much so. And also to Tanya and to Jackie, I know I worry you guys, and also Lynette, but I just want to say I appreciate you guys the most, I really do and thank you very much. I've tried to do well and it's time to move on.
Mr. Chairman.
I have Councilman Nicholson up first.
Oh, okay, okay. Mr. Chairman, let me say first how much I appreciate your leadership of the council over the past year. You know, everybody up here's got a different personality, but one of the things I appreciate about you is your heart beats about forty beats a minute and so no matter what's going on, you're cool and calm and collected and I really think you have done an exceptional job leading the council and I very much enjoy serving as your vice chairman, so thank you for that. I also think it is time for me to move from the middle of the horseshoe, so I'm going to leave with you. And when the time is right, I intend to nominate Councilman Flurry to serve as chair and Councilwoman Fuller to serve as vice chair.
Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I mean, I could support the Councilman Nicholson's intent, but I think the council clerk needs to give us the rules on which we would operate. But let me just say that I appreciate you in the sense, five years ago when we came into council together, your growth as a public servant, as a man, as a councilman and chairperson has been, has been really amazing to see. I don't have to say and I don't want to embarrass you that we all came on with a little apprehension and we worked together and I appreciate you acknowledging the fact that you listened to me, you know, and, but you have grown and represented the chair well, but more importantly, you represented your district and the city well. I don't have to tell you how many compliments I get when there's an incident in this city, whether it's in my district or any other councilman district, you are there. Everybody acknowledged that. Councilman Bowman was here and offered whatever you was afforded to offer, comfort, encouragement and I don't know how you do it. I mean, you must be the energetic Bonnie, the Bonnie guy who never runs out of energy. But I just wanted to say that when we started this new council, I said at the time that it has been a tradition of the council to rotate council members and that usually the same council chair doesn't serve twice. I just expressed that. I didn't mean no disrespect, but I just want to say that your presence as the chair has been very soothing and consistent in how you allow the council to operate and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say, Mr. Chairman, I really appreciate your chairmanship since I've been here. I really appreciate all of the support that you've given me since I've been here, not just on the council, but every event I've ever asked you to come to my church, you've come not just because I invited you there, times that you showed up just for the support and I just appreciate the brotherly love that you've shown. And also with that, I have to say something else. I'd like to say with Councilman Nicholson, I appreciate you because sometime during the summer, I went to Councilman Flurry and I asked him about being chair and he said, well, you know, whatever, and he went around. And so then, but not just doing it that way, but I also went to Councilman Nicholson and said, hey, think about Councilman Flurry being the chair and I know you are the vice chair, but would you agree? And he didn't have to pray over it, he didn't have to say, well, let me think about it. You agreed, just topped the line and say, yeah, that's a great idea, think that would work just fine. And so for that, Councilman Nicholson, I just had to publicly say that and of course also have to admire Councilman Flurry because when I asked him about it, he didn't just say, yeah, I'll take it, but he had to pray about it and think about it to make sure that all things are done decent and order and I just think that it worked out very well. And of course, Councilman Nicholson called me the other day, asked me what I thought about Councilwoman Fuller being the vice and I said, that would be just great and I just think if, as long as we have communication, everything just works out smooth and everything will work well and I just really wanted to say that and I thank you all very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
And also, Councilwoman Fuller, I just have to say this publicly, in the last two months, three months, certainly you have blessed my life, you have completely grown tremendously in a short time and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
But how come you wouldn't call me back about lunch last week?
I had a virus.
Okay. I'll let y'all look, I don't want none of that, all right.
All right.
No, really, the mayor, no, I ate a banana and it messed me up. I had a thirty-nine-minute virus, didn't I?
I can vouch on it. He steals his wife's bananas, by the way, and he pays the price for it.
That's being a vegetarian. See, we wouldn't do that to you.
I omitted, I omitted speaking about the Mayor Perkins and his office. I appreciate the work that we have done with each other in the past year also, so thank you to you and your staff.
Yeah, congratulations on a successful year. I appreciate you, Chairman.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I made a promise I'd never eat another banana.
We'll get you a bunch tonight.
Mr. Chairman, the only rule, it's really a law that the council has to be aware of is that the chairman, the person who's nominated for chair cannot vote because he gets a little extra stipend. So under state law, he can't vote if he's been nominated for a chair, but otherwise you just follow the regular rubber rule, somebody makes a motion.
So we have to vote for these separately, so you can make your motion.
I move to nominate Councilman Flurry as chairman.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Green, I'm sorry, by Councilman Nicholson and second by Councilman Green and our others to affirm Councilman Flurry as the new chair. If there's no discussions, please vote and...
I voted.
And that motion carries with six, that's the majority. Congratulations, I'm so glad. You might as well get a new one, but I've been at the desk for the past two years.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, you get paid through this meeting, so you have to stay there.
Oh, let him. Mr. Chairman, I now move to nominate...
Second.
Councilwoman Fuller as vice chair.
Second. Been moved by Councilman Nicholson.
But I can still vote for myself because I don't get a stipend.
And second by...
Me.
Councilman Green.
Yeah.
And Councilman Butcher.
Yeah, he was there.
For a vice president, Councilwoman Fuller. If there was a discussion about that, please vote. And that motion carries with seven. Congratulations, Ms. Fuller.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we now have an executive session that's scheduled at this point in the meeting. We would need a motion to go into executive session...
So move.
...for the items that are listed or the lawsuits that are listed on your agenda.
So move.
All right. Moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Butcher.
Do it. We have refreshment.
We have some water, Mr. Chairman.
Some water, some water and chips.
We don't have any bananas.
Good. Did we get a vote?
Yes.
We didn't get one.
We're ready for the second session.
Did everybody vote?
Did y'all vote? Did everybody vote?
Yes, sir.
Bradford. Motion carries with seven.
I voted.
Here.